Please, Lord, continue to shower your blessings upon us all. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Nobody does the E. G. O. on here.
No.
Come on. The first thing we do is make sure that these are turned off or to silence. So, you've got a phone? Check it right now and let's get it to silence or turned off so that you don't interrupt the proceedings. And as usual, on regular Commissioner Court days, the first item of business is public input. And I remind everyone that public input is limited to you inputting to the court. We don't have the opportunity to output back to you. We ask those that would like to address the court, if it is an agenda item, if there is an agenda item that you want to talk about, we would ask that you wait until that agenda item is called to address the court to be more relevant. If it is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to address the court. I don't have any information forms that have been filled out. I don't know if there's anyone that is trying to address the court or not. Do we have any public input? Okay.
Yes, sir. It's regarding the first item.
You need to go to the podium?
Oh, she said it's regarding the first item.
Oh, the first item. Wait, the first item's called. Okay, very good. Then let's move on to Commissioners' comments. Mr. Precinct One?
Yeah, as you can imagine, it's been a pretty trying time that we're all going through up here right now. And so, we just ask for continued prayer for everybody. The weather's held out for us. The volunteers are working hard. The state has been just top in what they're doing, giving their guidance and direction. All of our different department heads have done a tremendous job. The elected officials have on what they're doing, what they're organizing, and how they're putting all this together for our long-term recovery. And so, just ask for continuous guidance and prayer from all you folks to keep us all going in a good direction here. That's it.
Okay. Two? Soon, we're going to talk later about the burn ban update, so I'll skip that. Precinct Two, work continues on door-to-door welfare checks and damage assessments. You know, basically, we've got a couple teams of some wonderful people who are assisting in this and basically trying to identify needs, those who have had significant damage, with the resources that are available through various volunteer groups. So, we're also working hard to get the word out on debris removal, registration with Tiedem Istat and with FEMA, and now on checking in with our county engineers who need to, for homes that have had significant damage, before people get too far down the restoration path, make sure you're going to have a permit to rebuild there. So, that needs to come out. In the Center Point area alone, we've identified over forty homes that had significant damage and another thirty or so properties needing debris cleanup and have already connected them with volunteers who are helping. And then there's another twenty-five or so severely damaged homes in the Kerrville part of Precinct Two. Otherwise, Lyons Park, well, for that matter, and Flat Rock Park experienced severe damage. And actually, a couple groups have approached me with an interest to rebuild Lyons Park in particular and raise funds to do so and, of course, design it to be a much better park than it ever was. So, I look forward to hearing their plan and bringing that to court for approval. Since it is a county park, it will need that. That's all I got. Okay? Precinct Three?
Also busy with constituent response. I've visited about four different ranches along the Guadalupe. One of them in particular's got a mile and a half of property, so that's like, you know, considered about sixty miles of our area. Every single fence is down on this place and erosion throughout. So, it's going to be significant. I do thank the folks that briefed, especially the USDA guys that briefed just recently that we attended, talk about fence repair. These guys are great. They're going to be very popular in the future. It's, right now, I'm going to concentrate on debris and damage assistance for all those constituents, which I've got about ten right now. And if you're out there and you haven't reached me, please do. I want to come see your property, meet with you, because navigating how to do debris is a challenge. It's not as simple as it sounds. It's just not. Right away is first. They started pickups on Saturday, and they're doing that first. Second is private property, which is right-of-entry, and you have to submit a form. That form will come out soon, if not already, on our website. And third is going to be the river. So, that's the debris. And you have to submit properly on your forms for damaged stuff, whether it's fences or erosion or livestock, of which the majority of our people that live on the river suffered all three. The presentation on the thirty-first or legislative session, I will attend. Hopefully, our VFDs have a chance to provide a little bit of testimony on that. I think they have an important message to be heard as well. Burn ban plan seems to be going well in effect, and I'm glad that we did that. We've got about a half-inch rain on the east part of Kirk County yesterday, which did help. But lastly, I end this with by-name recognition. There are some superstar people out there. One I'm looking at in the back is our sheriff and everything he's done. Dalton Rice in the city has done incredible amount of work, keeps checking on me to make sure I'm okay, which you need to know that. Captain John Miller, I sure hope it gets back to you in the EOC with DPS, is an incredible ops chief who keeps all the operations focused where they need to be. So, if you're wondering why we found so many of them missing, it's because of the coordination a lot by him. Incredible guy. Ken Bell with Tiedem, he is my go-to guy to fix stuff, wonderful person. And then lastly, Commissioner Tom Jones, to my right, has lifted so much for our Commissioners' Court that I am very grateful for his efforts, including all day yesterday. Thank you.
All right. Well, I don't have a lot to say. Commissioner Holt covered a lot of what I was going to say, and I'll have some with the first agenda item, but I can't say enough how grateful and my heart goes out to all the local heroes we have that have stood up and gone to the fight. I mean, we have a lot of help coming from outside. That's been documented, but our people that live here every day are the ones I tip my hat to. And the volunteers, the local volunteers, that have organized so many different things that helped us get through this and are still working to help us get through this. So, my hat goes off to the people here in Kirk County, the residents, the heroes. You know, there's, in a time like this, there's people that run to the fight and there's people that run away from it. And that showed up immediately in the people here in Kirk County. So, I'll have more during the next first agenda item.
Before we get to the first agenda item, the one thing that I would like to do is introduce my new best friend, Shory Harmon in the back of the room. If you wouldn't, stand up so they can see you. This is our local Texas Division of Emergency Management contact, and we have spent a lot of time together recently. I just wanted y'all to know who he is, and they, you live, you actually work here. We have an office here in Kirk County. So, he is with us. And go ahead and sit down. I don't mean to put you on the spot. But I can't say enough about Tiedem. They showed up in force, and they brought with them the entire state government. There were more DP, I went in a room with so many DPS officers that I felt like Indiana Jones in the library, you know? They were everywhere. And game wardens. I had no idea. We had almost a hundred and fifty game warden show up. So, to the state of Texas, to Tiedem, and especially Jim Kidd, hats off. Hats off. Okay, with that, let's move on to the consideration agenda. Item number one, point one, is consider discussing taking appropriate action following the update on the status of recovery efforts from the Fourth of July flooding. And what I have to tell you is that we've come a long way. This is what, day twenty-five? I count the fourth because everything happened early in the morning. I think it's day twenty-five. And we are at, we are still in the search and rescue phase. We're still looking for the two missing. And we are preparing and actually beginning our response and recovery. If you haven't seen, the contractors' trucks out on the highway were moving debris at warp speed. And there are two locations. One is over by the soccer fields, by the landfill, and the other is at Center Point ISD in Center Point where the debris is being taken. And the contractors are very invested in what we're doing. Been very impressed with the contractors. I did lift the burn ban as of an hour after sunrise this morning for those that live in what I call the unaffected areas. And what I mean by that is from high watermark to high watermark on the banks of the Guadalupe, if you're outside that area, then you can burn today. But if you're going to burn, we ask that you notify the sheriff's office, the dispatcher, let them know. We also ask that you notify your volunteer fire department wherever you are out there because you're outside the city limits. There's no burning in the city.
And Judge, that's, that's, that's the policy we have all year long.
Absolutely. But we're following it. And that, that is actually the permit process. I've lifted burn ban on a limited basis. If you call in to the sheriff's office and the dispatcher, there's a record kept of that, and that is your formal permit to burn. If you don't do it, you don't have a permit, and you will be, you will be fined.
Think of it this way, if you don't mind me interrupting.
No.
You know, somebody sees smoke and calls in, "There's a fire over here." Well, dispatch already knows that address. They know that it's, it's all right. So, we don't want to run our volunteer fire departments up and down the road needlessly.
The only other thing I'd like to jump in on is to remind everybody who is going to burn, there is no burning after dark. So, if you're going to burn a large pile, start early and frankly, put it out before dark. That's how these things get out of control when we have wildfires. What I put in my order was that you can't, you can't burn before, one hour after sunrise, and you can't burn for one hour before sunset. And if a fire is still going, I have required that it be manned twenty-four-seven. Someone be there on that fire if it's, if it's still going. I agree with Commissioner. I'd rather see it put out. And I have instructed that people that do not follow this, the volunteer fire departments are authorized to put the fires out if need be. That said, deep breath. The affected area, we all know what that looks like, and that's going to be a chore. The reason I took the burn ban off the unaffected areas outside the floodway is because it's August almost, and we've got to get these things burned. We've got some regular burning that needs to go on out there in the unaffected areas like Mountain Home. But on the, on the affected areas, we're going to start that. I've been working closely with Commissioner Jones and others, and we've come up with a complicated system that we understand, and then we'll have to explain it to you. But it basically is, there's going to be an east zone, a west zone. This is just the basics of it. And those zones are being broken down into sub-zones or sections, whatever we call them. And we may have to change the wording because we have other people using terminology that we want to be consistent with. But those subsections is that, the idea being that when we start burning inside the affected area, we're not going to light the whole county up at one time. Each section, as it is cleared, and when I say cleared, that's by the Texas Task Force One, who's in charge of the search and rescue, meaning that the piles that are there have been gone over, not once, not twice. Last, last account I had was four or five times each they've gone over these piles, looking for human remains. And I hate to mention that, but that's what we're doing, two that we're still trying to find. And so, once that, those piles are cleared, then the second thing is, we have to have them removed. And for those of you that live on thirty-nine or twenty-seven, you know they're removing. So, that's kind of the status of where we are. We hope to get to the affected area, maybe by the end of the week, we're not sure. We're trying to get as much of this burning done before everything dries out. That's kind of where we are. Now, I had somebody that wanted to speak on item one, if you would.
Yes, sir. Forgive my boss. She has her own agenda.
We're finding there's a lot of that.
My name is Kimber Malcolm. I'm a Hunt resident. I actually live and work at Heart of the Hills Summer Camp for Girls. Thankfully, we were not in session, though we did have a major loss, and the property is decimated. We've taken an absolute nosedive in property value. And throughout this entire thing, I've known that we're going to be okay because we have such a strong community. However, people keep talking about fundraising and how important it is that we get funds to this community so we can rebuild. And I think it's absolutely absurd to expect flood victims to help out flood victims in this sense, especially when there is a thirty billion economic stabilization fund in the state of Texas, paid for by us. There's thirty billion dollars that is sitting there waiting to be used to stabilize local economies for disasters such as this. And there is a cap on that fund. It cannot go higher unless, you know, there's some delegation and some talking about it. But the reason why there is a cap on this fund is to make sure that people get to use it, to make sure that taxpayers get to use this fund. So, it is projected that we will hit our cap this year. So, I'm asking all of you, and I'm imploring our local leaders, especially Precinct Four, to please reach out to the state and expect them to help us. We have all paid into this fund. And what we are experiencing is an economic disaster. It's a domino effect. Summer camps get people to come out. All those people come to our restaurants, they come to our hotels, our rental properties. You know, we're able to contribute to the schools. There's, we're all so interconnected. Whatever happens to one business is going to affect another. And if we have an economic stabilization fund, why aren't we using it right now? Why are we talking about fundraising when it's right there? So, really, that's, that's what I'm here for. I haven't heard anyone on an official level bring up the economic stabilization fund. And so, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that that is something that we should absolutely be pursuing. And to not pursue that is negligent, is negligent of our obligation to one another. So, thank you.
Come on.
So, we've, we've been given strict guidance and direction. I agree with you. I don't disagree with you at all. But there is an order in which we have to do things, and that will be a part of that. But we have to be very cautious that we abide by the rules set forth by FEMA on where we get funding and how we get it and where it begins.
So, we need a way for the federal government to ask for permission to use our own taxpayer dollars?
No, ma'am. That's not what I said.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking, FEMA is a federal entity, so I'm wondering.
Correct, correct. And this discussion didn't come from FEMA. This is coming from the state of Texas, that we have an order of events, that we need to follow things to where we are still able to receive FEMA funding because we don't want to turn it off in the midst of this. And so, we will look down these roads towards that funding. There's no question about, we've already talked to some of our state representatives.
Okay, yeah. Is there a way to reimburse the votes that have already fundraised? I mean, I just have concerns about my neighbors who have been decimated by this but are willing to still step forward and, you know, financially help each other out, but that it's still, it's a sacrifice for a reason. So, I'd like to see my neighbors compensated for that. As a property owner who, this property just did a complete nosedive in value, having my taxes potentially raised, you know, my property taxes potentially raised to help cover this cost is daunting. But I know I'm not the only person in that boat.
No, you're not.
So, I'm just concerned about my neighbors not being able to be financially compensated.
Sure. And I'd like to follow up too, though, on some of the stuff under one point one. You are going to be seeing a lot of contractors here for a while. Please get used to it. They've already got over fifty trucks out on the road. And when I'm talking about trucks, we're talking about big trucks. Between Ash Britt and Cirrus, that are the two contractors that were hired by the state, and Tex Dot, Tex Dot's been working for almost two weeks out there already, working out on Highway Thirty-Nine. It starts out not looking like they're making a lot of progress until you really see it's cleaned. And so, don't be fooled by thinking that nothing's being done. Those trucks actively got, really hit it hard. They had a soft landing and began on Thursday evening, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And then Friday, they had more trucks, and then Saturday, more, and then Sunday, yesterday, they had over fifty trucks out.
Yeah.
And this is going to be ongoing for months. You know, like Commissioner Holt said earlier, they're going to start on the roadways and everything. When they hit that floodway, they're still going to be there, still active, and they're going to look like they're kind of in the, in the way at some point, right? But they've got to get this cleaned up for us to get Kirk County back to where Kirk County needs to be.
This is a, this is a marathon, not a sprint. And to go in a little bit more, and Commissioner Holt touched on this at the beginning, the right-of-entry forms. In other words, you have a property out there, those trucks and those contractors won't come on your property unless you have a right-of-entry. Starting tomorrow, hard copies be available at the Hunt School, Ingram VFD, and Center Point VFD. There'll be a representative at those locations. Also, there'll be an online copy that you can do online, and that should be in the works either this evening or tomorrow.
Today.
Today? Well, that's, we'll see. But anyway, you've got to get that in. And that's much preferred than burning. If you let them come in and take it off your property, get it out of there, you don't even have to light a match. So, look at that, look at that hard. And another thing, as soon as, as soon as something comes out on this stuff, it'll be on our Facebook page, the county Facebook page, and their website, the city as well. So, follow those because, believe me, we don't, we don't want to hold it up an hour. It gets out immediately so you know the next step, it's, the next domino is falling and you can pursue it, okay?
We can't lose sight of the fact our primary goal is still getting closure for the families. And that is the primary goal.
Right. So... And let me add, the state is here, trust me. They are here, and they talk to all of us daily. The contractors that we're talking about, the debris that's being removed, is really off of county roads, and it's for public removal. And the state of Texas is paying for that process for us, and it is. We're talking about millions, and we're very grateful for their assistance. They're coming. They may not be at your front door yet, but they are coming. The other thing about the economic impact of this is I serve on the KUR Economic Development Board, KDC. And the state of Texas, Tiedem, recommends that a community develop what they call an LTRG. I'm learning more acronyms working with the state than I've ever known in my life. But an LTRG is a long-term recovery group. And what they want is a group of civic leaders back from various walks of life and different experiences to come together and to guide our economic recovery. And the KDC Board has been approached and is working with the KUR Together Group. And the KDC Board has been approached and is working with the Kerr Together Group, and they will be the core, like the executive committee of the LTRG. And we have already met, we are on it. It doesn't feel like it, it doesn't look like it, but believe it or not, we are on it, and the state's on it. FEMA, on the other hand, they're more reactionary, they react to it after the fact. But they're here, they are here. And we've met, I met with the SBA administration with these SBA loans. They've got money to give you right now, if you go sign up. They can put cash in your hand or a credit card with cash on it, as we sit here right now. This is all going on out there. The best place to go is to the website, which gets to information. We have several members of the press here today, media. All communications with regard to this are being handled through the JIC, the J I C, another term, I'm looking back at General Oates. I'm learning things. A JIC is a Joint Information Center. And we have the PIOs, the Public Information Officers, from various, all the stakeholders involved, the city, the county, and others, and they're handling the communications so that we can devote our efforts to trying to get through where we are today. And one of the things I've learned about emergency management that I'll share with you is, it is a process, and it's a step, one step at a time. It's a process. And each day gets a little better. Sometimes, not as much as you would like, and sometimes, more than you would like. Yesterday was a good day. Our contractors were hauling big time. And when we had the afternoon meeting, we heard how many tons of debris that they'd moved. And with regard to debris, I will let everybody know that there's two kinds of debris. There's vegetative debris, and then there's the other stuff.
C and D.
What they call C and D. And that's construction and...
Construction and demolition.
Demolition. Demolition. And for those of you that are putting your debris out on the right-of-ways, I better back up. There are right-of-ways for state roads, and there are right-of-ways for county roads. And these contractors are working on the county roads. What you see on the state highways, which would be Highway 39, Highway 27, 1340, all of these are state highways. That's TexDOT. And TexDOT and TIDAM are jointly doing this, but they're not doing it together, but they're doing it in conjunction with one another. So, when you see people out on the state highway, those are TexDOT people. When you see them on the counties, it is TIDAM that's doing that, picking up the tab on that. And one of the things that I told them yesterday was, small consolation, they were talking about how difficult it is on some of our small county roads, narrow county roads. And I said, just be thankful that they're paved. Kerr County still brags about the fact that we were the first county to pave all of our county roads. And so, they can at least get in and not be in the mud and the muck. Anything else on where we are with this?
Yes, sir.
I know you've been very active. Just so you know, Commissioner Holt and Commissioner Paces have been very active with the rescue, the volunteer fire departments. And Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Jones, one or the other of them is at the Emergency Operations Center at all times. And they have been very active in this process. So, yes, sir.
Just maybe to clarify, somewhere I see grant money going to good things. As I sat down with one of our landowners, and he's looking at land recovery, over a million dollars with erosion and fencing alone, this only pays for 75%. Think about being a German landowner. You don't sell your property, you try not to, right? So, they're hanging on to this as much as they can, and maybe land-rich, but they're cash-poor. So, when they consider their 25% down deposit, they're wondering how they're going to get there. That's where I think some of these donors, I hope, are going to help them with that huge deposit to pay for the roads, the erosion control, and the fences. Because right now, it's overwhelming, as I sit down with him and I look at that. The second that we've seen, like, one that both Rich Paces and I service is Old River RV, that's like another camp, right? So, it's the youth camps, but it's also our other camps that have to rebuild. And these are for profits, and they're really going to have to lean heavy because they're underinsured for the most part, right? On a lot of their properties in order to get back. And a lot of folks have been canceling on them. So, there's definitely an opportunity cost that they're suffering right now as people have canceled. And how do they recoup from that? So, I'm counting on those folks that move money to 501(c)(3) to really reach out. And in particular, I'm happy that our Hill Country Community Foundation has set up a specific line, which they don't already have, to go directly to those camps to help them out, because they are going to need it. And our goal, like we said the other day, is to get them back in action in a year. That's considerable when you count the amount of construction and money that has to flow their way. And it's going to still be a hit on their pocket, make no doubt. That's all I have, thank you.
A few other just tidbits that you need to know. The estimate on the reduction of the fair market value of our properties on the tax rolls is approximately $240 million. I don't know if that's been updated this week or not, but it is significant. Another thing I wanted to point out is, the SBA is loaning money at 2.81% on a 30-year note to help you underwrite the expense to rebuild and recover in the place. So, do not overlook the SBA benefits, and they are available to everybody. And I made sure when I met with them, that for those of you that have had your property and your family for generations, they're there to loan you money too. You don't have to have a mortgage. If you have a mortgage, then they'll subordinate to the mortgage. Anything else? Okay. Then let's move on. Item 1.2, which is, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve a 9/11 commemoration proclamation. General Oates.
Good morning, Judge Kelly, commissioners. Thanks for your service to our county.
Thank you for your service.
No new acronyms today, Judge.
Good, thank you.
I'm Michael Oates, I live at 667 Lower Turtle Creek, that's in Precinct Two. Thanks, Rich, for all your support of us. Here today to ask you for your consideration and approval of a proclamation making September 11th, Patriots Day in Kerr County, very similar to last year's proclamation. As you know, it's appropriate for us to commemorate the day we lost thousands of American citizens on September 11th, and also, the 20 years subsequent to that, thousands of soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines who were killed fighting in the global war on terrorism. The difference in this year's proclamation, Judge, is we've added two more Kerr County residents to the proclamation, Charles Kappa and Javier Perez. Very much appreciate your support. We will have an event again at Shriner on September 11th at 5:00 PM to commemorate that day, and all of you are certainly welcome. Judge, I know, given the circumstances, if you're still willing to come speak, we'd love to have you.
I'm always willing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the commemoration proclamation as presented? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Item 1.3. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve a 9/11 commemoration proclamation. Commissioner Paces.
Not too much to add.
Been busy?
Yeah, kind of focused on some other things. But, you know, we've approved adding Gillespie County to the Subregional Planning Commission, and it's now up to Kendall County. I'm not real clear, it may be on their agenda tomorrow, and it may not, depending on who's available to attend. So, we'll see. I'm confident that it will be done, it's just a matter of whether it's this court meeting or the next one. Otherwise, you know, we're continuing to be extremely disappointed in LCRA and Public Utilities Commission for refusing to respond any further and refusing to meet with us. So, we'll get another round of letters out this week. And, you know, shame on them. All we're asking for is a simple meeting to discuss the issues and make them aware of all of our concerns.
Do you all have a reason why it's not on ours first? Is there an order? I don't know what you all...
What's not on ours?
For us to approve.
Approve what?
We did.
We did.
Oh, we did?
We've already done it.
You voted for it.
You voted for it.
You know, I think I remember that now.
There is no reason.
Okay, okay. So, we're just waiting on Kendall County?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
I have no confidence in LCRA doing anything. I mean, they, you know...
It's very sad.
One of their board members told me they were far, so, boom.
Anyway. That's all I've got. Okay, farewell. Then moving on, item 1.4, which is, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to accept donations to the Kerr County Animal Services totaling $30 for the month of June 2025. Reagan Gibbons.
Good morning. These will be our June donations for Kerr County Animal Services.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Motion, second? Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Item 1.5, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to award bids for dog and cat kennels for the U. Kerr County Animal Services Facility. Bids were received on July 14. Reagan Gibbons.
Yes, sir, good morning. So, we've reviewed as best we can through these bids. A couple of things, I believe that the Gator Kennels are the way to go with the dog runs, and that the VSS Medical is the company to go with for the cat cages. I believe those are the lowest bidders, but they appear to be what we need. I will say that Commissioner, or former Commissioner Letts, did reach out to them to see if there was any way we could actually physically look at any of these, because we don't, you know, we have some schematics and stuff, but it'd be kind of nice to be able to see them in person. I don't know what we can do there. They were coming up with a list of where these things are located around the state. We just kind of ran out of time on that. So, I don't know if there's any way to extend this another couple of weeks and give us an opportunity to do that. The companies, Commissioner Jonathan Letts said that they are aware that there may, we may push it back a little bit. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I would really like to see these things, and we just have not, with everything going on, we haven't been able to get there.
Returning to our county attorney.
Yes, sir.
Can we...
I don't know if you are required to award those bids today, or what the timeline is. I know that there was some...
We put a timeline on them to get the bids to us, but I don't think we put a timeline on us to respond to the bids.
No, there's...
I think that's right.
So, I think what you're asking for is just an extension.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know any reason we wouldn't want to do that.
Right.
The motion that I would like to make is to vote on the cat kennels, because the cat kennels seem exactly what we need. And it is the lowest bidder, and they're all pretty low, but this one is exactly what we're... Because all these have to be made by hand and crafted, and that takes time. I do want to make a motion just for the cat kennels. Understanding, dog kennels, so you're all tracking, of the 511,000 that we have set in the budget to pay for all this, the dog kennels alone are about 125,000. That's the lowest bid. That's important enough for us to see in person. Okay? So, I want to wait on dog kennels and go see them in person before we vote on that. But I'm confident that we have the cat kennels. And frankly, the old cat kennels that we have are enough to boost that inventory should we have an overrun of cats. So, comfortable voting on cats, not dogs until we see it.
Did they break it down on the bid? I remember they had them broken down.
They did.
Can we accept just a partial?
Yeah, they, each of the individual folks voted on four different things. It was the cat quarantine, right?
Yeah, I remember reading all of that out.
Yeah, so they're voting on four. And what we chose is to consider is Gator for dogs and VSS for cats. And I'm comfortable voting on VSS for cats, and I'm comfortable that we'll get the vote, but we'll see in a moment. My motion is to vote just on cat kennels today, to get that started.
Second.
If I can add to that real quick, just so that, if Reagan had a look at the bids that came back from the dog kennels from Gator Kennels, just to make sure that he gets it back to you guys before the estimates, it's their only bid for a certain number of days, likely. I don't know what it says in their bid, but just making it back before y'all, before that time runs up.
Are we going to associate a name with who we're awarding a bid to?
VSS Medical?
Mm-hmm.
Cat kennels?
Yeah, make a motion for VSS, as the cat kennel provider.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
What's the cost?
You've got the cost breakdown, but I thought it was...
For the cat kennels?
Around 40 total for both sets.
Let's see here. Good question. I should cover that. For the cat holding cages, $15,078. And for the cat quarantine and isolation is $10,926.
25 total.
Yeah, about 26.
Thank you.
Okay. No other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. And we will revisit the dog kennel minutes. Very good. 1.6, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request to put fundraising progress sign in the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation on the courthouse grounds. Shane Evans.
Good morning, gentlemen. Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation has, respectfully asked, to put a fundraising sign in the yard, courthouse yard, where the big Christmas tree is every year. They had asked for, initially had asked to do this as soon as possible, but they have had a board meeting and decided that it would be better if they could put the sign up on Wednesday, September 3rd, and then resume the campaign for the getting funds for a new Christmas tree. So, I would like to ask that they'd be able to put their sign back up on September 3rd.
Well, we've got some distraction in the courtroom here.
Sorry, Mom. It's Jay Grubbs, no, it's Grandmother Y'all. Anyone has a spot to be here?
So, do I need to repeat that?
No. Did you all hear what he said?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And what they want to do is just put a fundraising sign that shows where they are with regard to their goals?
Yes, sir, they do.
Do it every year. So, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve that, 1.6.
Motion? Second? Okay, I'll second. Motion and a second? Any discussion?
We do this every year, right?
No.
We've never put a sign up before. But we work with them every year.
Yes.
So, financially, my question would be, why fundraising now? And what's the difference now between last year?
Well, I think because it's a little too soon to be putting a fundraising sign concerning everything that's happened.
It's a new tree.
It is.
And they're trying to get a new tree. The one that we have, that the Christmas Lighting Corporation has now is 13 years old, and we have electrical issues with it every year. Every time it rains, it trips, you know, GFIs.
You probably said new tree, I didn't hear it, so...
Yeah.
Thank you, new tree, got it.
All right. They've actually started fundraising a while back. It's just, I guess they want to now... This is George Agner, his...
This should be a one-time deal.
Yes, for this tree.
Just this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you, Shane. Next is item 1.7, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to amend the court order number 41272, liaison appointments to add another county representative to the Kerr Economic Development Corporation. What this really is, is Mr. Letts retired, and he is still serving on the KDC Board, but in his capacity as a local businessman. And we have an opening for the county, and so, we're trying to fill that opening. And this is, they will be the core group for the long-term recovery group. And...
I move that we appoint Commissioner Tom Jones to that position.
I second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
No refusal?
No. You ready for this?
Yeah.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Item one point eight, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding Kerr County's membership with the Kerrville Area Chamber. Previous court order number four one three one eight approved bronze membership for two hundred dollars, which is the nonprofit membership fee. An additional one hundred and fifty dollars is required for a bronze membership for the county.
I don't understand why there's an additional fee when we approved two hundred.
I don't either, but.
We were trying to get the minimum membership, and it's not a it's not allowed for that unless you're a nonprofit.
We're a local government. We're not a nonprofit. We're not a five oh one C three.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the additional hundred fifty dollar fee for membership in the Chamber of Commerce, Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Against? Four one. Okay. Item one point nine, consider, discuss, and take consider and discuss ordering the constitutional amendment election. Disaffirmative.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. This is the order that we have to do for the constitutional amendment election in November. The order that I had in the backup for the early voting place, I had the main early voting as the Hill Country Youth Event Center and then the West Kerr. I'm not sure the event center will be available. So I have another two orders here that I present I'm going to present to you for you to make a decision or however y'all would like to is to have Hill Country Youth Event Center as the main early voting site. If it's not available, move it to the Union Church and then, of course, have the West Kerr or do the Union Church as your main early voting site for the Kerrville and then the West Kerr for the one in Ingram.
Okay. And the early voting is what date?
It starts October. The twentieth and runs through October thirty-first. The last two weeks of October.
Okay. With regard to the well. Technically, we're not supposed to talk about it, but I'll have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second?
What's your motion?
For consideration.
Is it a motion to order the constitutional amendment election?
Yes.
Because that's the agenda.
We just don't know where yet.
And I don't.
Yeah, so that's two two different topics there then, right? So I'll make a motion to consider and discuss ordering a constitutional amendment election.
Which is what I seconded.
Right.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the election. Constitutional election.
Constitutional is consider and discuss. Your motion needs to be approved.
Now, with regard to availability, I suspect that you don't need the entire youth event center, right?
No, sir. The the small classroom and the large classroom is what we would use for the constitutional amendment election.
I I suspect that we should be able to rearrange what's left of the E O C by October.
Does a question come into play is how much they're leasing from us at that time? Our lease agreement?
The lease agreement, which means it's for the entire property.
I don't anticipate that being a problem with Tidham. They're in they're in the process of demobilizing right now. And if you notice, you see fewer and fewer state troopers and state trucks out there.
Maybe I'm missing something, but maybe are you asking them to make that decision about where it is on paper today?
Yes.
Well, it's not on the agenda.
It's in within the order.
Okay.
So but what maybe it sounds like maybe was saying was that the Union Church and the West Kerr Annex are both available for early voting sites? We have two bookings for the Union Church during that time. Which we have to cancel, but just see.
Well, it's not my motion, and I didn't second it, but why don't I suggest that we?
What did you say, Julie?
We have two.
Bookings.
Bookings at the Union Church during that eleven day time.
Well, those would be canceled anyway.
They can be canceled, just like we've canceled a lot of events at the youth event center already.
I I think they've already canceled. I think they've already been calling out canceling stuff out a pretty good ways out now.
For the Union Church?
Oh, no, you're talking about the Union Church.
Yeah, I was talking about the Union Church, so it'd be the same thing.
Well, that was my question anyway, is the Union Church, could it handle early voting?
It's a relatively low turnout.
I feel like it would be we we would be able to make it work.
But we'll have to cancel the existing booking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know where else in the county to hold early voting. That would be.
I think we're dealing with a lot of unknown right now this far out. I think it'd be prudent to use the the Union Church. I mean, when you and you look at the scheme of things, what Tidham's doing for the whole deal compared to a couple rentals at the Union Church, I think that'd be the route to go. Does that fit your motion?
Well, our motion was just it wasn't about the location.
It wasn't. It's just about the order of the order of the election.
Yeah.
So you got a motion on and a second in front of us, so.
I I mean, I think you've got a good plan, one or the other, and we'll make it work, like you you originally said, probably.
Well, my thought is if the youth event center is available, they ought to be free to use it.
Right.
If it's not available, the backup is certainly the Union Church.
Okay.
And do we start canceling bookings now? I kind of I'd probably prefer.
You give them a heads up.
It sounds like we need certainty today, so to make that decision today, she'll need to.
But all we're doing all we're doing today really is just approving the constitutional amendment election.
But the it the location's in order. The location of the election's in order.
It just wasn't described in the item.
Right.
Okay.
So subject to availability, we'll look and walk in.
You have to read the pass down. She's got it down in there.
So somebody restate the motion so we know what we're going to do.
I'll make a motion that we order the constitutional amendment election utilizing the Union Church for that election.
In the West Kerr Annex?
In the West Kerr Annex. Is that the two?
That's.
Yes, sir.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
I'll second that motion. Those in favor, raise your hand. What are we going to do?
One opposed.
Opposed?
I'm opposed because of the we're still using the Berd E two point five equipment, which created a problem with the last constitutional election. Those are all still pending. It was never properly certified. Don't have a proper lab test, so I have to oppose you.
So I'll I'll vote for it. So that's a four one?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Now, with that, believe it or not, for rarity, we're actually on time. So let's take a brief recess. We'll come back at ten o'clock.
I do. Let's talk later. We really, uh, probably do need to get.
It's from a child?
Oh. Thank you.
I volunteer you four.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, we have a quorum. Court will come back to order. Next item on the agenda is 1.10. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to open, read aloud, and receive bids for the Kerr County Request for Proposal for the rainwater catchment system at the Kerr County Animal Shelter Facility, and refer the bids to the appropriate personnel for evaluation and award recommendations.
Folks, we have two bids today. The first bid's coming in. From Texas Rainwater Systems LLC, Texas Rainwater Systems. We're out of Fredericksburg, Texas. From a Mr. Schneider. Now, just as a reminder, this rainwater system is for the animal control facility. It is the primary source of water for all the dog and cat kennels used in the facility. So it's not just there for irrigation purposes. It's part of the operational, which is why it's a requirement to go with it. Uh, the first bid, uh, that we have from, uh, Texas Rainwater Systems is for $99,954. Larger tank options are available upon request. They highlighted that option. Of which we have a, uh, it does include one 16,392-gallon tank and three 9,907-gallon tanks. That is, uh, a considerable portion of the cost, just so you know, that the tanks alone cost $54,029 of the $99,954. Okay? Second bid. That we have.
I think I found the page you need.
Thank you.
Right here. But this one comes with a check. I kinda like, yeah.
Check made to Don Harris? Kidding, it is not. Um, this is from Rain Bear. Rain Bear is from, uh...
Bernie?
Uh, Bernie.
Bernie, thank you. And this bid, total project cost is $121,935. That is Rain Bear. And it has the same requirements as the previous that are met. I'm trying to give you the tank cost real quick. They have it broken down a little differently. I always like the public to know the majority of something. Yeah, sorry, didn't, didn't have the, uh, actual tank cost broken down like I wanted. But again, that second bid, uh, Rain Bear out of Bernie, $121,935.
Okay. Who we giving them to? Mr. Lance?
Reagan.
Well, you're gonna give them to Nadine.
Yeah, I guess Nadine has to have it first.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. I don't understand the check, but, uh...
Yeah, to Kerr County?
Is it a bribe?
No. Just so you know.
I'm just joking.
Five thousand.
I bet it's a donation.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to take that separate.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 1.11. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the purchase of two spreaders, side loader boxes, and installation from Warren Truck and Trailer LLC in the amount of $35,702.90. Donnie Houghton.
Yes, sir. Uh, we would just like to, uh, for the court to approve our purchase of these two. They're cross-conveyor spreaders, they're truck-mounted spreaders, and they help us with our asphalt process, and they also replaced two that we had auctioned off back in May.
And this is in the budget already?
Yep.
Funds are already in the budget?
It's not part of our capital for our year that the court had allowed us. Um, it would be, we would request that we could use our revenue, take it out of our revenue from our auction.
Okay.
If we need to make a budget amendment, you know.
I move for approval.
My second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve the purchase of these, um, spreaders, uh, as presented by Roden Bridge. Any discussion? Whether you need a budget amendment or not? That lady right over there is the one you talked to.
Little chat.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Judge, will you go back to item 110, please? Um, I don't, I don't remember if I've been on one. I'll need an order to accept the bids.
Well, I think we gotta get the recommendations, don't we?
No, we need to accept them.
Oh, oh, to accept the bids.
Yes. I, I move that we accept the bids.
Sorry, second. Got a motion and a second to accept the bids that we just read, uh, and sent to the committee to review.
Good catch.
So, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.12. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the updated employer benefit agreement membership with MASA, M-A-S-A. Ms. Pata.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Um, open enrollments upon us, and so this is a, uh, my, the previous agreement we had with NASA had my predecessor's name on it, so they wanted some, uh, a new one, and then as well as they are dropping one of our plans. So now we're only offering two options, uh, so that's what the agreement is. It's just an update. We already, we already use our, we already use them, employees already enrolled in them.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, uh, updating the employer benefit agreement membership with MASA as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.13. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on the renewal of all supplemental insurance benefits with SWBC. Ms. Pata.
Again, nothing's changing here. Everything's staying the same with our supplemental benefits since we're re, uh, upon open enrollment. Only change is that we are going from the 60-day waiting period to the 30-day waiting period. Other than that, everything else is staying the same, including rates.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, uh, the renewal of the supplemental insurance benefits with SWBC as presented. Any discussion?
Just a clarification for the court and the public to understand, there was a waiting period previously, right?
There was a 60-day waiting period?
Which we didn't think was fair.
Correct.
Because some people got 30, and some people had to wait for 60, and so we went away with that, right? Now, we're in...
Well, elected officials had no waiting period.
Yeah, which is even more unfair, so...
And so now we've made it across the board. Everybody waits 30 days.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Uh, item 1.14. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to ratify and confirm an interlocal participation agreement with the Texas Association of Counties as part of the Texas Association of Counties' health and employment benefits pool. Ms. Pata.
This was part of our renewal. Um, just, I, I missed it in the renewal process. We just needed to sign it and, and send it out to them, so this is just ratifying that Judge has already signed it.
Okay.
I move for approval.
Count motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.15. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to authorize Kerr County Sheriff to exempt Sheriff's Office employees from the 2B3 parent, H close parent of the Kerr County Employee Handbook related to limitation of 320 hours of carryover pay time off during the period of the disaster declared on July 4, 2025, and extended on July 7, 2025, by order of the Kerr County Commissioners' Court. Authorization to end September 30, 2026.
So currently in our policy manual, uh, on 9/30, we look at everybody's, uh, PTO balance, and anything over 320, um, no longer rolls over into anything. And so Sheriff reached out to me a couple weeks ago, and because of everything that they've had to do during the disaster, uh, he, uh, was no longer approving PTO for his employees until, I guess, things, um, get a little bit better. And so he's requested that, um, that policy be waived for his employees, so he, they have more time to use their PTO in the future.
Sheriff, do you mind explaining a little bit more? I mean, do, give...
You know there's a cap?
His guys are worn out.
Yeah. You're just spread thin, the bottom line.
There's a cap on PTO. I wasn't not letting them take it off during the time we needed everybody, so I asked it to just be expanded for the next year, because I did not let them take off.
Got you. That's all. I move for approval.
My second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, uh, exempting the sheriff's employees from, uh, 320-hour limitation for carryover pay time off as presented? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Vows in the room. Item 1.16. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for hours worked for all non-exempt employees, and straight time, uh, pay for exempt employees for hours worked over 40 hours directly related to responding to the July 4 flooding disaster through the pay period ending August 9, 2025. Ms. Omen.
Good morning. So last regular Commissioners' Court, I brought this to you. You approved, um, doing this, and I told you I would bring it back, um, each time to let you extend or not, so that's why I'm here.
Tracy, just, we, just for the public, will you explain the non-exempt and exempt employees?
Sylvia might be better at that than I am. I know who's classified as that, but I don't know really why.
Non-exempt employees are gonna be our hourly employees. Um, exempt is gonna be your department heads, uh, anybody who has a supervisory role.
Okay. I believe we have somebody that wants to speak on this. Ms. Hall?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve and a second. Discussion? I, I guess, so we're saying that exempt would, would go ahead and get paid for overtime?
They, uh, they get paid straight time for the hours over 40. That's what you approved last time as well.
Okay.
Instead of like time and a half?
So salary is...
Just the regular salary for the hours they work?
They don't normally get, um, any extra hours over their 40 hours salary.
Normally, salaried people don't get paid overtime, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll give you an example, like, uh, like Jason, uh, all my captains are exempt employees. You know, normally they don't get paid anything extra, but in times like this is they get, uh, they get paid, but not time and a half, straight time, anything over 40 hours.
Is that in the policy, or? I don't know.
It's not in the policy, which is why it came to the court to approve it last time because of the emergency.
This is, this is making policy. We have precedent for this is what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. And this is only extending it through, uh, August 9?
Right.
My name's Terry Hall, and I live in 118 Independence. I'm also speaking on behalf of We the People, Liberty in Action. Um, our objection to this is that when you sign a contract to be an exempt employee, in other words, salaried, you're not paid hourly, and you forego overtime pay. That is part of the agreement you make. Now, obviously, we understand we're in extraordinary circumstances right now, but at the end of the day, so are all of your residents. So is everybody out there. Businesses are taking a hit. Landowners are taking a hit. Uh, Commissioner Holt just mentioned earlier how they're not gonna get completely reimbursed for the costs and the losses that they're experiencing right now. So that's our concern, is that the residents out here are hurting. We're all in crisis. We're all experiencing this together, and we, the more we up the amount we have to pay everybody, the higher likelihood it is that you're gonna look at that 8% tax hike. So that's our issue with it.
Part of the employees don't have contracts with Commissioners' Court to work overtime?
Did everybody hear that?
No.
No.
Exempt employees don't have a contract, but they're hired as, they're identified as...
At will?
Okay. They're still at will. Meaning, we can let them go anytime, we'll make sure.
For, since we're still in discussion?
How many employees does this actually affect? So we're kinda understanding what we're looking at financially and impact? Tough question, I know. I'm throwing a curveball.
I don't have an exact number, but I'm gonna say we have, probably have about 20 to 25 department heads.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe a little less than that. I don't have an exact number. I'd have to go look at everybody.
I have a hard time with this, uh, because what's next? Uh, elected officials? You know, I know, we, we, we had people, well, it's, you know, we, everybody's stepping up. Uh, we had, uh, meetings yesterday on Sunday, you know, and the, all the days run together. We don't know, and everybody's putting in extra, and, uh, and that's the difference, you know? If you're salaried, that's part of it, and so, uh, I have a problem with that. Not that they're not, not deserving, everybody's deserving, but it's a different deal.
And just to clarify, electeds can't receive it because our salaries are published, and we can't go about that.
Oh, good.
I'm glad you clarified this.
Yeah, thank you. But, uh, no, there's a difference.
We already did this once, right? We already did this once? Is that right?
Well, we've done it before, yeah.
No, but I mean, did we do it the last time in court? I can't remember.
Yes. You did, and that's why I'm bringing it back.
So we're just, we're talking about one more pay period, or?
Through August 9.
When was the original, when does the original order expire that we did?
It is lost, I agree, so the 26.
Hopefully, that was the big one, and there's not as much of this right now.
Well, there's less and less of it. I can tell you that.
I'm Robbie Pettifees, Precinct 202, Center Point. Um, I just wonder if there's an opt-out? Do the, some of the employees that we're talking about, do they have the option of opting out and just considering that that's their giving over and above, like so many of us? I know a lot of, a lot of people have, to Terry's point, given a lot of time, and they have no compensation. Um, I also wonder if there's an option of getting comp time down the road when things are a little calmer.
Oh, and low pay?
So they can, uh, opt to not get paid. We did have one, uh, department head who did not want to get paid, uh, and they did not get paid. Uh, so they, that is an option. Um, comp time gets a little messy because there is no comp time for exempt employees. So I would not necessarily suggest that, but that's just my recommendation.
Thank you.
I didn't have a big issue with it when we did it before, because I know how many hours everybody's putting in, but I also know we're slowing down.
It's the hours you, you like that.
Yeah.
So I do have some, um, preliminary totals for the very first payroll that this, that you approved. It was just the first two days, right? Because the emergency was July 4th, a Friday. Saturday was the end of the pay period. Uh, and then this last, this pay period that we're processing now was a full two weeks, and this pay period was about two-thirds of the hours as those first two days. So if you, uh, so it was 3,471 hours just in those first two days combined for all county employees that worked the emergency that was eligible to be paid out. And this pay period, again, it's preliminary because we haven't really started processing. It's about 23, almost 2,400 hours.
But you don't have that broken down?
So 3,400 hours versus 20, for two days, 3,400 hours for 14 days.
And what's the approximate cost of that?
Um, it was just under 155,000 for those first two days, and again, estimate this time it'd be about 135,000. But that's before we have the opportunity to really make sure people enter their time correctly.
I mean, I think of Roden Bridge alone, wow.
Yeah, but that, that's not broken down.
I don't believe Roden Bridge is doing anything past that first initial bridge clearing. I don't think that they have...
The incident.
I didn't see any overtime or any, um, emergency pay hours for this pay period.
You don't see any for this pay period?
I didn't, but I haven't seen it since it was due at 10:00 AM.
All right. So, what do we have? We have a motion and a second?
We do. Lots of discussion.
Okay. Uh, this is gonna, gonna be a vote to authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for hours worked for all non-exempt employees, and straight time pay for exempt employees for hours worked over 40 hours directly related to responding to the July 4 flooding disaster. Now, those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion fails. I mean, I'd be okay on a non-exempt if, if there was a way to separate the two. That's up to you if you wanna make a motion.
Can we, can we change that to, to, during that, to make the motion fail?
This motion failed.
Right.
Is there another motion? Let me read this. So I'll make a motion that we authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for hours worked for all non-exempt employees. And then you would just strike the rest of that? Yes, sir. And so we'll strike, and straight time pay for exempt employees would be stricken? Yeah. So we now have a motion that says to authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for hours worked for all non-exempt employees for hours worked over 40 hours directly related to the flood disaster. Yeah. Okay. You got a second?
Through the pay period ending August 9.
I'll give a second.
August 9?
Is that...
We've got a motion and a second. Discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. 1.17. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve a one-year suspension of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Kerr County and the county of San Patricio County for short-term sheltering during an evacuation. Uh, we simply don't have the ability to take them if there's a hurricane.
Right. I move for approval.
My second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the interlocal cooperation agreement with San Patricio County for short-term sheltering evacuation, just for this year. Right. Have you already reached out to them? Yes. Okay. They're okay with it, I guess, or?
They understand.
They're not happy, but... We've swapped texts, but yes, they understand.
They've had disasters too.
Sure. So those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Uh, 1.18. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to ratify the amendment to a commercial lease agreement between the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Board and Mooney International Corporation, Inc. And this was in response to the disaster. Uh, there was an amendment, uh, and I approved it, and I'm asking for forgiveness.
I'll make a motion to, well, maybe not forgive you, but, uh, to, to take the appropriate action to ratify the agreement.
Right.
And I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to ratify the amendment to the, uh, lease between the airport, Board, and Mooney. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. We just understand what that, for the public understands what Mooney is used for now, what the amendment was, what they're doing there.
Oh, it's confidential.
No.
They don't want, they don't want that disclosed. That's not heard.
Yeah, I know what it is, but I just, I would hope that the public had a chance to understand.
It's for good cause.
Need to know.
Okay.
That's why I did it.
Okay.
Right.
Temporarily.
Sure.
Okay.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Uh, 1.19. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to submit a request for public assistance to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the July 2025 flooding disaster. Ms. Putnam?
Good morning. Uh, exactly as it says, uh, we need the, we need to submit a request for public assistance from FEMA in order to get disaster release here, relief here in the county. One step in a million. First step.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve submitting the request for public assistance to FEMA for the flooding, uh, July 4 flood, floodings. Are you asking for a specific amount, or how does this work?
To my knowledge, we don't have a specific amount yet at this time, so, uh, it's, it's gonna be a fluid operation to go through every single step and every single department that we're, or aspect that we are going to be requesting for assistance.
We basically just have to get our ten and a half, a month, better time, five hours. So we've got to get ours, get ours, get ours, and then we're gonna have just, so...
Okay. That just seems odd to...
Yes.
And that's the line?
Something without asking for a specific.
Well, this is FEMA.
Well, this is being compiled as we go.
We will eventually get to that point.
Yeah.
Uh, we just can't get to that point without getting the name, as you said, the name and the hat.
So, this is the first step of a long journey with FEMA?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the funding line up there, the numbers, so people know, DR 4879, Texas.
Yes, that is the disaster number.
Yeah. And examples of FEMA's temporary housing, we've seen that in previous floods?
Yes, um, it, it, to my knowledge, it could also assist with the road to bridges, uh, every, everything. It's...
Yeah, they're working a lot.
Yeah, encompasses a lot.
Okay, thank you.
It's the public assistance side.
Okay, got a motion?
All right, got it.
And a second?
All right, got it.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Item 1.20. Consider discuss take appropriate action to immediately hire one CID investigator due to the increased workload resulting from the July 4 flood. Sheriff?
Yeah, this is what I discussed to you all last week. We've already seen a slight increase in some crime, and we actually got our first fraud case. We're going to be working with Attorney General's Office, but obviously, I anticipate this to rise as time goes on.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve the immediate hire of a new CID investigator as presented. Any discussion?
Just where are we at for investigations? Like, of course, the identification of personnel and things like that, task forces, a huge amount that I've seen your sheriff's deputies do. Oftentimes, with the disasters, you see looting and people trying to take donations and things like that. How are we looking in Kerr County?
That's exactly what I'm talking about. We've already started to see that happen.
Okay.
And, you know, uh, obviously, we have a couple hundred additional first responders. My concern is, at some point, they'll be leaving, and then we'll be left, you know, to handle this, and I look for a significant increase. Right now, we've got plenty of help here, and it has already started. I won't get a lot of detail, but it has, and we, like I said, we got our first fraud case. I really look for that to come up, but Attorney General's Office is going to help us with that. But, like I said, once everybody leaves, we'll be taking care of all the businesses to be taken care of.
And just as a matter of information, at one of our meetings yesterday, there was talk about this kind of thing happening with people trying to get people to let them haul off their debris and entering into what they believe are handshake contracts for fifty dollars. It turned out to be five thousand dollars, et cetera.
Scammers.
Uh, scammers.
Yes.
And so, one of the things that we talked about yesterday is preparing a, uh, for lack of a better thing, it's a piece of paper that you can put in your truck that says that you're an authorized contractor for either Tiedem or Kerr County, what have you. But something to legitimize them so that anyone entering into some sort of verbal agreement with somebody that's offering to help them that is not officially part of Kerr County or our recovery team, uh, you need to go to their windshield and look, see if it's sitting above the, uh, the steering wheel. I got one in my truck. I mean, we've got to do something.
Yes, we do.
They're out there, you know, a couple months ago. Anybody in here get calls from roofers? You know, that people...
Not since yesterday.
Yeah.
Sheriff, uh, my only question is, okay, is this a permanent position? What happens two years from now?
Well, we're only getting busy anyway, so you've got to remember, we haven't followed up on caseload for two to three weeks now, so we're real behind the curveball. But, you know, did I need it before? Yeah, but, you know, we're getting by, but with this, you know, I think we're going to be busy. And by that time, you know, crime's only increasing here.
And if my recollection is accurate, I think we talked about this last time, didn't we?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah, we did.
Was this one of the positions that we talked about?
Right, last week.
And last time we discussed, were you looking for two, but now you're just looking for one?
He's trying to fill the gap right now.
Yeah, yeah, right now, we need one, you know, I did put one in for the new budget, but this is like to go to work pretty quick here, because, you know, the cases are here now building. Like I said, I only look for it to expand, you know, it's just kind of starting to snowball.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Can we have a motion? And a second?
Yes.
Good. And those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.21. Consider discuss take appropriate action to reclassify existing senior deputy position, pay grade 22.5 to environmental law enforcement, pay grade 21.5. Reagan Gibbons?
Good morning. So, this is, uh, as you all know, this, our senior deputy with the department did seek other employment. So, that, that position was a, was one grade, uh, pay grade higher than the other environmental law enforcement position. So, I'm just moving forward whenever I can, can hire somebody else. They need to be back at the regular spot.
We'll take recommended savings any day.
Yes, sir.
I'll move to approve that we...
And I will second.
Reclassify the existing senior deputy position, pay grade 22.5 to environmental law enforcement, pay grade 21.5.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Savings on this, Reagan?
Yeah, we're actually, you're lowering the pay grade, so that's...
Yeah, for a new hire.
Two thousand dollars, I think, out of our budget, is what I recall.
Something like that. Okay, thank you. Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.22. Discussion regarding proposed departmental request and tax rate, budget and tax rate. This is not an action item. This was, uh, this is a discussion item. When we voted last Commissioner's Court meeting, we voted to give the, uh, two positions that had the certified law enforcement certification, uh, to bring them up to what the first responders are making in the Sheriff's Department, and it was a six-step increase. The paperwork that I had in front of everybody did what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
122.
Oh, this, okay, this is just the budget? I've made much progress on the budget. We've, we know pretty much what it's going to cost to run the government, but we don't know much about our revenues right now, and we don't know how we're going to deal with the decrease in fair market value. So, I don't really have much to report. Been working with the auditor, and we should have something out shortly. And it is what it is, or is what it will be. Any other discussion about that?
It's just, without that, it makes it very difficult to talk about salary adjustments and any other new positions.
I understand.
Yeah.
That's, that's the important.
Yeah, we're shooting in the dark here a little bit, and, uh...
But I would assume, as Commissioner's Court, we're going to have to avail ourselves to be available for further budget meetings to catch up?
If we need to, so be it.
So, yes. Keep our calendars open, is what I'm saying.
Well...
And don't forget that if we don't adopt a budget, we default back to last year's budget.
And, and keep in mind that any commissioner is more than welcome to come by my office and discuss where we are at any point in time.
Thank you.
Good idea, thank you.
But, but that doesn't, that's good, and I appreciate that. You've always been there, and I've, I've taken you up on that several times. But I'm still waiting on him to be able to get what he has to present to us.
The recommendation.
Yeah, the recommendation.
Like you do each year. And, Judge, I, maybe it involves maybe you stepping back a little bit from the EOC where you can and staying here a little bit more, and depending on Tom and I out there, you know, I, I, just a suggestion there. Because I know you're spread thin, so if, but we got to get something done, and I'll see something on paper. And there's other things down here that are fixing to be discussed that, uh...
That decisions are not going to be made on today, probably.
Yeah, we can.
We're really close on his budget.
On expenses.
Again, I welcome anyone who would like to come by my office and discuss it. And I can speak with any individual commissioner.
Sure, yeah, sure.
It's the judge who can't tap out.
Well, okay.
Is coming on to tap out.
Well, I'd just like to see that proposed, like you always do. And it usually in there is, uh, some of the things we're going to discuss a little bit, what you put in upfront, and then you see a bottom line. So, anyway.
I have somebody that wants to...
Make assumptions about the loss of revenue.
I mean, we've got some numbers. I don't think it's that difficult, but we can come up with an estimate. I've got Mary Contoit. I thought that was French.
First and foremost, I, my name is Mary Contoit. I am a citizen of Kerrville, 1.3 miles from here, and I just want to thank everybody in the room. I've encountered you in my other travelings about, but I just want to say thank you. I don't have the adequate words. I do have some words to add, just my personal perspective and what is on your plate and will continue to be on your plate for weeks, days, and years to come. So, I am representing myself, and by association and commiseration with 33% of your constituency, the senior citizens on fixed income, I have a few little pieces of data. My COLA in 2024 was 3.2%. My COLA in 2025 went down to 2.5%. And I have experienced two major weather events since 2023 through 2025. I dare not and will not call them disasters, but financially borderline. I, um, during, because of those weather disasters, my insurance went up 12% out of that fixed income, which, pardon me, went, yes, which is 12% of my fixed income just from my homeowners' insurance alone. I have received increases in my home appraisals, and I'm right doing the paperwork on that as well. I live just south of Mount Tybee. I've called to the city planning and several others. The weather events, minor, um, and not, never again major after this, but inconvenient, where the runoff goes all the way down Ford Street into Quinian Creek, and we have not been repaved in years. That is so not appropriate to talk about today. What I want to talk about is I have no commission, I have no budget, voting, bonds. To get that disparity of over 10% that I have to absorb and more, year after year, because my insurance company has recognized, I live in Texas, I live in a weather vortex, and they hate insuring me. So, that said, I could close, but I want to put a little personal face to it. I'm a retired health services administrator, and the bulk of my career was managing small communities of 200 to 300 seniors, from golfing to 24-hour dementia care. I had toilets running over, I had mountain lions in the backyard, and because it was Northern California, I responded to earthquakes, and I responded in fires and drought and floods because just two years ago, January, I was visiting family, and we were all locked in because of floods and poor planning. And you all know that's notorious. I'm not going to hold California or anything else. I'm just going to put this face. Seventy-five years old, I love Kerrville, I love the hill country, I love Texas. My being here is not four generations, but years of planning and investigation, tax rates, no tax on my social security, wonderful church community, wonderful city government community, met most of you, wonderful county. Help us keep it that way. Let's wait a year, just let's wait a year before we do any more things with budgets, appraisals, increases. And yes, I've done those shifts as a salaried employee and got three days off because there was no other mechanism. So, I understand, I do understand, and I wish I had the money to give you, I don't.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll just say one thing. We don't control the appraisal district, so when they raise your appraised values by whatever, 10%, kind of seems to be their standard, that is not us.
One possible to that is the budget needed from the city was canceled. We got it off.
Yeah.
And just to clarify what Commissioner Pettifees is saying, the central appraisal districts report to the comptroller of the state of Texas. That's who they report to. We're not in that loop.
So, typically, I mean, or you can comment further, but we have reduced the tax rate.
Yep.
So, that there was a, no new revenue tax rate. So, at least in terms of county taxes, the last few years, you should have not seen any significant variation.
Okay.
Hope to do it again.
Most of the next items that we're going to deal with on the agenda here are things that are normally decided in the budget process and would normally be ripe for decision. I just offer that for what it's worth. They're on the agenda, at least for us to discuss.
Item 1.23 is to consider discuss take appropriate action regarding the special request for fiscal year 2526 budget and clarify the changes made for animal control solid waste department.
Judge? If I may?
Yes, you may.
All I'm doing here is I'm just seeking clarification on what was approved or what wasn't. Just, I'm trying to set things up for October, and I had a little bit of confusion on it, and I just want to know what was approved and what wasn't in that. Hangly too, because I, I'm down one, one person now. I just want to be able to give accurate information.
And this was your request to reclassify those to, uh, and you tried to take them from a 22.5 to... What are we doing here?
That's correct, Judge. The, the senior deputies were getting reclassified to a law enforcement, uh, from a 22.5 to a 21.5.
Will you approve that today?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, this is just kind of clarification from the...
And so, then, moving down to where it says environmental law enforcement.
Yes.
That, those are, tell us again what they are.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking Reagan, tell us again what they are.
Yes, sir, can you answer a question, I'm sorry?
What is it you're asking for?
Who's environmental law enforcement?
So, is that showing a raise?
That's the, the deputy bond.
Sorry adjustment. And that's, you're taking it from a 21.5 with six steps to 21.5 with 12 steps?
Yes.
And that's for, because of their certification?
Yes, sir.
And that would put them on the same level as KCSO deputies?
I believe so.
That's the issue before the court. And another irregular thing that's been done is we're taking votes before I submit a recommended budget.
I don't like it.
Well, I don't either.
Right.
But that, we've been put in that, that position.
You know...
Is this something that we want to put in the position, recommended budget?
Yeah. Again, I, before, you've gotten all these special requests, and you put it in there, and then we discussed them once they were in there, yeah, your names.
That's what we did last time.
So, can we, I, I propose we do the same.
With this one?
Yes.
Okay. Does that have a motion?
Well...
Well, you put in whatever you think, and then we'll discuss it after it's on paper, all of, all these type things. You know, you've, in the past...
When we see the, the big picture, we may not get to this level of granularity, and... So, you ready to pass on this for today?
May I just say also?
Go ahead.
This, this was part of, this was, uh, there was an increase for two deputies. There was a reclassification of an existing position into another that had a, a pay raise, because it's going to entail some supervisory duties. And then, also, there was elimination of a full-time animal control officer and a part-time kennel tech, and an addition of a full-time kennel tech. Basically, uh, and there was a savings, an actual budgetary savings out of all this of, uh, gosh, I can't remember. But I've had, but it was, there, there's a budgetary savings, so just wanted to throw that out.
And I do appreciate, that's good clarification, but that should be for a budget meeting. And I think that's what we're trying to get to say, for a later budget meeting, not part of Commissioner's Court.
It was discussed during that special meeting last week. I just wasn't clear, there was confusion after court. I'm just trying to make, I'm just trying to see what, what was decided.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of moving all the way up to 12. Yeah. I do think they need an increase.
Let me just clarify, so that everybody understood where, where we were and where we are. Where we were two weeks ago, when we discussed this, and we started piecemeal approving parts of the budget rather than waiting till the whole budget. We did some stuff with KCSO that needed to be done, uh, and then with regard to environmental, we had the discussion about these two senior deputy, or I call them senior, two, two deputies, positions. And at the time, when he first, the special request was first made to me, Sean was still here. And so, uh, this was a request to raise the two deputies with the law enforcement certification to a comparable level as their peers in the KCSO. And that was, both of them would have gone to a 21... And that was, both of them would have gone to a twenty-one point five with twelve steps, but added six steps each to get them there, right Reagan?
Yes, sir. That is my.
And where we are now is he's asking for clarification. And if what I'm hearing is you want this to be put in my recommended budget that everybody can discuss at that time rather than deal with it piecemeal because historically we've not done it this way.
Exactly.
It was an exception last time.
Yeah, but what we had asked the department or y'all, you guys to do is bring us to where we can compare apples and apples, not apples to oranges, because they're not KSU. And they have two totally different functions of law enforcement. And I don't know that you've been able to figure that out yet as to how you can do comparable between y'all and other officers in your same stature.
They need to stand on their own merit.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Well, I think I think the threshold question, at least that I feel like I need to address today, is this something that you want me to incorporate in my recommended budget and deal with at that time?
Yes.
So we'll pass on this item?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Ray. Yes, ma'am.
Now, just to clarify.
For those of you that don't know, this is the boss of the county.
Yeah, okay, okay. And just for clarification, as you stated, we did it very different last week while you, or last meeting, while you voted on individual positions. I'm understanding now you kind of want to go back. So am I clear, we can rescind all those court orders?
No.
I'll have it on the next agenda.
Just just on this decision.
So all the rest of those court orders you want to stay and those will stay in the judge's budget? This is the only one that's not?
Well, he can make it as a recommendation, but yeah, I see your point. We voted to approve your last recommendation that did not reflect the change that was shown.
What we did last time was very irregular, but I see my auditor's hand up. It was specific to the sheriff's request.
My understanding is you wanted what you had in your budget and the way you approved it and then as we finish that up with the revenues, we remove it and then we're going to start working on the proposed budget as it's verified the commission's court. And so being at that point, it would incorporate all of the motions that were made last time.
So this court approved the one that even though it wasn't done the way they wanted it, it was approved by the court. So I would think that has to stand and you can bring this back as your recommendation separately. Is that right?
If you want to.
And that's what I want to clarify because it sounded like Commissioner Harris wanted to go back to step one, which means we need to rescind all those court orders. The judge can do.
I think in all fairness, this is the only question that has any ambiguity to it. And and it was put on the agenda today to clarify ambiguity, which we have not done. So this is the only thing that needs to be backed out of whatever our orders will be on this thing, just the environment, this environmental position, the step twelve position. Everything else stands.
I don't think there was an order on this.
Well, there would, there would have been.
You don't have to back it up.
For point of order, do we need to vote on this rescind?
It's not a rescind.
It's not a rescind.
Previously.
Okay.
We only voted specifically on some of the items for the sheriff's department.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank you.
I see no reason to rescind those.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that that's accurate. I think that you voted on other items too and it was sort of out of ordinary, which is probably.
What were the other ones we voted on? It had to do with new positions and special requests.
So they may, they may, if that's really what you all want to do, they may need to rescind it later and we do that as.
We'll true all that up at the budget. If we pass one.
We will.
Item one point twenty-four, consider, discuss and take appropriate action regarding requests for new positions. I think that's a little bit of what we're going to do in here. Any other new positions we need to consider? We've already done the CID investigator. Okay, so we'll pass that. And we'll move on to item one point twenty-five, which is to consider, discuss, take appropriate action to approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Kerr County wage adjustment. Ms. Pata. I think I know where this was going.
Again, this is what y'all were discussing just a little while ago, so I mean.
I do have, I do have some public members that want to speak on this.
Okay. I don't have anything new to add other than that sheet was provided to y'all last quarter.
Ms. Hall.
Again, Terry Hall at one eighteen independence for We the People Liberty in Action. I just feel like there just needs to be a reality check between what happens inside government versus outside government right now. Your constituents don't have any extra money and they are not getting richer from the disaster. If anything, we're poorer today since July fourth. Contractors have been donating their equipment, their employees, their time, free of charge during the rescue and recovery efforts. Everybody is making a shared sacrifice and doing everything they can to help our community that's in crisis right now. A pay increase will necessitate what you do with your tax rate. In our county and every county in Texas, they do it the same way because I've dealt with appraisers in every county I've lived in in Texas and they all tell me the same thing when I go protest my property tax appraisal value every single year, virtually every year, because it's done by a mass appraisal system and it's done based on your tax rate. So whatever your tax rate is and whatever your budget is, is what they pop out the numbers to meet that budget. So while you don't have direct influence over what the appraised values are of our homes, what you adopt for your budget and your tax rate absolutely affects how that turns out in each of our property tax bills. One of the things we're very concerned with, with the fact that landowners are very at risk of losing their property because they're not going to be fully reimbursed. They're either underinsured or they're deductibles or other reasons they're going to lose their property or their ability to rebuild. That leaves us vulnerable to corporations like BlackRock and doing land grabbing like they've done with the California wildfires and just about every other disaster in our nation. They will come swoop in and buy up this land and completely transform Kerr County into something none of us will recognize. They don't share our small town values. And it also hurts our young people who cannot afford homes here. And these are the very working class families that we need to rebuild all the homes and all the buildings in our community that have been lost. We're literally shooting ourselves in the foot if this means a property tax increase by giving people more pay raises. We're all dealing with unknowns, just like you are. And the state is picking up the tab for our biggest expense, which is the debris removal. That is a godsend. That alone is, should make us have any other discussion about increasing taxes locally off the table. Plus you're making four thousand dollars a day off the EOC, which was an unexpected income, if you will. The community foundation, sixty million and counting. And y'all got three pay raises, three years in a row. No more. Enough is enough. We don't have it to give you. And if this were to come to the voters, that's what we would tell you is at the end of the day, we don't have it. It's not that we don't think that everybody's doing a fantastic job in trying to do what we can to put our community back together. It's risking our community falling into the hands of these big corporations and potentially foreign entities, even though we had the foreign land bill passed, that's only foreign enemies. That doesn't keep foreign companies from coming in and buying up our land. So please protect Kerr County by protecting your residents and realizing what's happening outside of county government. We don't have any more to give you and we ask you to please hold the line.
And we've done that every year that I've been up there. We've always had you and others come in and warn us and about the tax rate and stuff and what have we done? Ends up with no new revenue rate other than the bond here. And so I'm proud of my votes on tax rates for six years, fixing me seven years, whatever is around the corner. You know, I'll repeat what I said before during the China virus year, we didn't know what was around the corner, but we tightened our belts and we didn't raise your taxes, even though it is unknown. We didn't give a wage adjustment or a COLA that year to our people because they were working. Some of their neighbors weren't working. Some of the businesses were closed down. And that's the way we handle things and that's the approach we'll take this year. I don't know, I'm not saying there won't be a COLA or whatever, but we're going to be cautious about what we do. So hold off on the accusations. We're doing the best job we can.
Well, and clarify that we did not raise the tax rate in nineteen, FY nineteen twenty, nineteen dash twenty year, kept it the same. And every single year since then, we have lowered the tax rate to be more in line with the no new revenue rate. And this year, I don't know if we can do that. Well, we'll see. We're sure going to try. I agree with, wholeheartedly with Commissioner Harris's comments.
But we've been able to do that every year and appraisals, appraisal values have gone up. And this year, you're not going to have that. And that's what's going to happen.
Two hundred and forty million dollar loss on tax rules. It's going to pinch. Well. But the one thing I wanted to clarify is, again, you know, I'm not sure what the appraisal district does. I know they take direction from the comptroller. They do not look at our budget and decide how much to raise their values. That's an independent process.
They go up, we go down.
That's exactly right. So there is no linkage between that appraisal district, whatever their ten percent or five percent. If they only increased it five percent, we have a no new revenue rate that was much less adjusted.
We'll see. We'll see.
That's it.
Can I ask why, why is this being discussed again? Didn't we talk about this previously? The wage adjustment?
We put it off. We didn't vote on it.
Okay.
And so that's, that's my question is, are we ready to deal with the wage adjustment request or not? If we're not, we pass it?
Yeah.
Be part of our budget meeting.
How far, how far down the calendar can we push before we, and I'm not ready to vote on anything.
You know, we're. Then we end up with last year's rate.
Yeah, what I'm asking though is how far down the line can we push before we fall into that last year's budget?
About a month.
Because that's, because that's the timeline we have to have, to have the budget in our hands to.
You can pass it up if I'm not mistaken until the end of the year, which is September the thirtieth and whether if we know what we know. And however, I think it still has to be passed on a regular scheduled meeting and I believe the thirtieth will be passed that last meeting. Will we, every Monday is considered a regular meeting? The waiting until this isn't going to make the numbers look better. It's, it's not going to do anything except condense some of the time that everyone is working really hard and putting in long hours has to get the numbers.
But I don't disagree with your statement, but I'm not going to vote on anything until I have a budget.
Okay.
The whole thing in front of us.
Okay.
So, so far what you've seen is everything has been put in review and you haven't voted on any of the final. This would kind of be the same thing. So, so where we got road and bridges, they're on the list of things. This wage adjustment is part of a risk that was not considered during the.
But if I have a budget and I know what road and bridge is asking for, we might can say if we want to consider this, we need to reduce this. We have to have a budget.
If we get it out in front of us, then we say, okay, we need to start trimming hard here, here, where do we trim? But if we're piecemealing like we're trying to do now, you don't know the end, end result.
And we need to understand what the latest estimate is for the reserve balance because we're probably going to be eating into that.
Of course. Yes.
So I invite each one of you to please come by and tell me what you'd like to cut in order to make room for whatever is important to you. I currently know what that is for the county judge, which his budget right now does include this wage increase. And so that's, I think, one that's been on the agenda and one everyone's asked.
I'm a little busy.
Just to clarify and something I don't understand and probably need to, there are two different ways to incentivize someone financially. In the budget, if we do a wage increase like for steps, right? That's one way to do it, where you target the individual in the budget. This is a blanket COLA, if you will, across that. Let's say somebody gets a step increase in the budget because we think they're doing a great job. Does this compound on top of that?
Yes.
So it could be like instead of a twenty percent increase, a twenty-two point five?
We don't have an avenue for, for increases throughout the year because they're doing a great job. The county policy does not include merit raises or opportunities like that for our employees.
Commissioner, if I understood your question and if I'm, I think I understood your question. The numbers that you see on these spreadsheets are current numbers. So when people are asking for step increases or grade increases, they're based on our current budget. And so if a wage adjustment is approved, then that would go across the board for everybody. It would also reflect, these numbers would go up by that percentage. Currently, we do estimates based on our current budget because we don't know if there's going to be a wage adjustment.
Okay.
Does that answer your?
Does, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone have?
Good morning. Just to speak upon what you just asked, we did try that here, but it failed. We had all the department heads get together, try to do an incentive for our employees, but it became favoritism. So with that being said, we've tried that route. So the easiest way was the COLA. So each department head, each elected official, because within your department, you have certain people that do a lot of work, but then they start talking amongst each other saying, hey, I got five percent, I got two percent, I got one percent. That made it very difficult within our departments. So it has been tried because I was on the committee and I used to be HR director and it did not work. We are not a corporation, we're county government. So that's my two cents worth. And I'm also going to say, we are taxpayers too. It costs us. I live on the Guadalupe River. Luckily, my property was not damaged, but my neighbors were. I'm fourth generation here, so I've lived here a long time and it's just very frustrating how people point fingers. We're here to help each other, not here to accuse each other of things. So I think everybody needs to look down and think about what you say before tax increases, all of this. We're here to work together, not against each other.
I do not detect an appetite to make a decision on this today. Is that correct?
Correct.
So let's pass it. And when I say pass, it's not approving it, we're just passing the agenda.
I think that y'all, as a court, if you carve out an hour ago, sit with the auditor to move forward one way or another in the near future so that y'all can really get the big picture of it. And, and so if y'all will schedule a time and try to sit with her, it will really be helpful to Jody to see what, what's planned already.
What's on paper now?
And what Jody was.
What's on paper? Like normally what we give, on paper, you've got a work in progress?
I've got one.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Pata?
I'm just ready for the next item, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, not, not that I don't want y'all to discuss it further by all means, I just was getting ready.
With regard to follow-up for commissioners to talk to the auditor, we're going to look to the two of you at that table to be the gatekeepers to tell us when we can put this back on a regular agenda. And what Jody was clarifying is, we did adopt every Monday to be a regular commissioners' court meeting for this very purpose, in case we needed it. So with that, we will move on to the next item, which is one point two six, consider, discuss, take appropriate action to approve the proposed salary increases for elected county and precinct officials for Kerr County fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Ms. Pata.
And based on y'all's previous comments, I don't know that we can move forward with any of this. I mean, I've, without having any direction, there's really not much I can.
Well, and let me, let me disclose to the court that we have some things that are statutory. There have been changes in judges' salaries that we're not going to have any choice on. And. And those issues are gonna have to be dealt with at some point. They are mandatory.
9-1.
And that was product of the last legislative session. So, so we'll pass on 26?
What are the statutory dates that we, for those?
Same as budget, fiscal years?
Okay, that's fine.
It's just, I think we do it on fiscal year, can't we?
The, some of the statutory changes are affected second or third.
Correct.
Yeah.
Part of it is also that the elected officials have to be published in the newspaper at a certain time, and it's all based on date, so all of that is going to have to be relooked at to recopulate all of the dates.
Well, I would. But I was just making sure y'all understood that some of these things are mandatory.
Right.
We're not gonna be able to do everything exactly the same. And I think that's even true if we don't adopt a budget.
Well, while we're talking about this, and about, let's meet next Monday. And can we do it in the afternoons, after the T E M meetings?
I think you already planned to meet next Monday, because that's when Bob will have the updated numbers.
Is there a chance we could move them to the afternoon, 2:30 or so, that meeting?
That'd be great. It picks me out of a lot of meetings being around now.
Yeah, yeah, more important meetings right now. So, if we could do it like 2:30?
Maybe even a little bit later.
Yes, sir.
So I can get here from school. Maybe even a little bit later than that.
August, whenever you guys.
Three.
That's gonna be August the 4th?
Yes, sir.
I'll wait and put it on my calendar.
That's K E D C Board meeting, the year first?
At what time?
Noon.
At noon.
And then we have juvenile docket in the afternoon, at 1:30.
All the more reason to put it later in the afternoon.
Okay, so, how later? What time?
My recommendation was 4:00 PM, August 4th.
I'm all right with that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, we're gonna, we're gonna pass on 26, and we're gonna take up 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27? Next Monday, August the 4th, 4:00 PM. On my calendar. Okay. Okay. Ms. Hall, is there anything else you wanted to say? I've got your. We'll move on to the approval agenda, item 2.1, Budget Amendments.
Yes, you have in front of you 14 budget amendments. Three are related to the flood, and they're all moving money around that we currently have budgeted into other places.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm looking on the front page of all this. That's something I don't think a lot of people are aware of, the costs that we're incurring with this. We know what's going on with this, we're having to, these are.
This is basically covering the overtime and the expected cost of the autopsies.
Yeah. $339,000.
And we're moving, like, we're moving the items that are, that are open right now, and, or that have never been filled for the year, and we're moving those out and moving them into like whichever department needs it, mostly it's the sheriff's office, to cover that overtime.
And that 550-year-old Garrett, what's that?
And that was the, we did not receive any bids, that was on the sheriff moving into where adult probation is, adult probation moving there. If you'll recall, we did not get any bids whatsoever on that. So, that money is being used to cover this.
So, that $285,000 is now gonna be able to be utilized for?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful.
And the first call transport is related to autopsy requirements?
It is. It's, it's what we pay the funeral homes to transport the bodies back and forth.
Something FEMA reimburses on.
Did you need this, Judge? Did you have your copy?
Commissioner, I heard that question, no, is likely the answer.
Yeah, no is the likely answer. We'll try, but no is the likely answer.
Okay. Yeah, I just, when I looked at that, I had a few questions, I just wasn't quite sure about what was being done there, so.
For those of you that don't know, our state representative, Wes Fardell, just came into the courtroom, welcome. Nice to see you here.
And his boss.
And his boss. Anything else about budget amendments?
We got a motion?
Yeah, we got a motion.
And a second, we did a discussion, yeah, so, voting.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Pay bills?
Yes, invoices for today's consideration, $1,548,501.92.
I move for approval.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to pay the bills as presented. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? 2.3, late bills?
There are not any.
Thank you. 2.4, auditor reports?
Yes, and we had audited the county clerk's office, and we're asking that you accept the report.
I move for approval.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Moving on to 2.5, thank you. 2.5 is accept monthly reports.
Okay. For June 2025, Environmental Health and Animal Services, Director Reagan Givens. Treasurer's Monthly Report, Tracy Saldan. Quarterly Report, January through March of 2025. Environmental Health and Animal Services, Director Reagan Givens. I move for approval.
Got a motion to approve the monthly reports?
Second.
And a second. Need discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Next is court orders, and I'm sad to tell you that I have not reviewed the court orders. Well, maybe we should pass. That's, that's what I was frantically looking for, is I hadn't looked at court orders. We've been a little busy. Okay, so, moving on to the information agenda. Status reports with department heads.
Jane? Good morning again. Just wanted to give y'all an update, that we are going to start changing out the ACs on August 1st, and the, starting in the afternoon only, and Saturday. So, I did a, addressed the department that would be affected by this. They're aware that we're gonna start changing out this ACs on Friday afternoon and Saturday, and also, if we run into any problems, hopefully not, we'll also have Sunday to, to take care of that. I will also send out a countywide email notifying people that I will have to have a crane parked on the Earl Garrett side of the courthouse, either in the lower level or on the top where the commissioner's parked, to remove the condensing units on the top of the building, and then put the new ones on.
Okay.
Hopefully, that won't take but several hours. We would also be working Friday afternoon late to take care of anything, and then hopefully, you know, we can finish up on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Good. Any other department head reports?
I take.
Good morning, Court. I just wanted to give a quick update on the Office 365 migration. We are pushing that back one more week. So, next Monday evening, we'll actually be going live with that. I was short-staffed last week, so I didn't get a chance to get through all the mechanics of the hows and the whys. We have my full staff back in this week, and that is our focus, to make sure that we get everything put into place, starting with some functional addresses for different departments. I have sent out some information on, you know, kind of the naming conventions and the why that is, so to get the standardizations into place. We're still working through the mechanics of how all that looks, so.
Keep up the good work.
We're trying.
I know, everybody's running as fast as you can, but, and we appreciate it.
So, Corey, when do all the new email addresses take an effect? Basically, that's, that's this date, as soon as 365 is up and running, or?
Yes, so the current domain, the Cochrane Text U.S., that will actually still be running in the background. We're working on the how-to list of upgrading your current Outlook environment on your desktops. There are, I don't wanna get too deep into it now, but internally, we have been actually running in parallel with the old domain and the, and the new domain, so we're, but we're still trying to figure out all the bugs. You know, we're taking that internally to get them fixed before we actually go live with, with the masses. But the current domain will still run as is, and anything that's coming into that address will still come in for roughly about a year. So, as you're looking at, when you get those emails to come in, if it's an automated one, go in and update those as fast as you can. Understand, there's a lot of flood relief emails that are coming in, I don't want to impact that at all, right? So, that's why we're leaving that on as, as long as we can. But TAC, Texas Association of Counties, has been great with helping us through this migration, and they've taken on a lot of the burden from us. So, it's, we, we look to be migrating in the right direction. I just, I wanted to make sure all the mechanics were in place before we went live.
Okay, thank you. Any other department heads? So, we're on 3.2, elected officials? Okay, 3.3, liaison commissioners?
I've missed a couple of my liaison meetings, but I've spent an exorbitant amount of time with some of them, like engineering and stuff, so, but I haven't had any reports from any of those that I have not been at that have been negative, so I think everything's been going great, as far as the ones that are assigned to me. You, you attended the PDL, so I did not, so you didn't have anything to report, so I'm assuming that went well.
I didn't make it.
Oh, you didn't make it? Okay. But, my hat's off to these folks, they're, they work like a machine on all their stuff. I'm just honored to be there with them.
People have stepped up. Road and Bridge is functioning at a high level, you know, kind of shift gears from seal coating to damaged roads and what have you, and they're doing a good job out there.
Just two quick updates. I accepted some support from our history commission for Veterans Day, the Ali Burton Building, we haven't forgot about that, we're still gonna hold that. And there's a display that we're gonna make inside, we have a presentation piece for the outside, and we'll have some special guests invited, of course, for that, especially if they're Air Force affiliated, to attend that. We've also trying to get the band from San Antonio, which is, would be nice. If not, we'll fall back on some support from J R T C programs, preferably Tyvee's Air Force, J R T C, if not, I know another one. But we'll be supported, and I thank the Oats for stepping in and, and making some finer details on that with our BSL office. That's number one. Number two, my recommendation, just again, for the commissioners, support for the sheriff in mental health transports, I still believe that the constables can play a role. My recommendation is that, for instance, my constable, which I've spoken to, seems to be amenable to help out just on one day a month, being the third Monday of that month. If we can make it possible where first Monday, second Monday, third Monday, fourth Monday, if we could recommend that to our constables, is to help out during the workday, take some of the relief off the mental health burden. Sheriff, the only thing we couldn't come up with is caged vehicles, just to let you know. Not, not many of them actually are suitable with caged vehicles, but if you had some horsepower, manpower to help you out with that, you might be able to find the right type of vehicle for that. Just a reminder again for our commissioners, if they want to support that recommendation to their own elected official, which is their constable, thank you.
But that has to be voluntary on their part. For those of you that don't know, one elected official can't tell another elected official what to do. They've got their job, and they do it the way they think they ought to do it. That would be a big help if they did that.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? We have an executive session item?
We do.
Okay, so let's take about a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene in an executive session on a personnel matter in road and bridge. and we'll reconvene in an executive session on a personnel matter in Road and Bridge.
Order. It is eleven fifty six and we are out of executive session and court is adjourned.
Fair. So, no that's okay. So, so the...